It's little after 5:15. We're holding a workshop to discuss MSBUs. I've asked Commissioner Richardson to open us with the indication and the pledge.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity today to take care of business that needs to be taken care of in the county, Lord, and be able to discuss these matters. We pray to God that you would guide our discussion of us, Lord, to make good decisions, help us to understand the situations completely before making decisions. We pray, Lord, that you would just bless this meeting, bless the commission meeting to follow, and, Lord, just watch over and care for this county. We pray in your Christ's name.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Only item on the agenda is to discuss MSBU's for road improvements. Mr. Harris, take it away.
I'm going to try to rush through this, Commissioners. You have a map that you might want to use if you want to better determine where some of these roads are that we're talking about. We met with Neighbors Giblin. They sent a couple of attorneys over to talk to us about the program, some minor changes that have occurred recently, and they made some recommendations on our approach. So I want to go through those with you, and then I want to talk about how we want to proceed from here. The first thing I want to point out to you is that they really emphasize that the issue of private roads requires 100% approval of all owners, or in the alternative, if the private roads are owned by an HOA, then the HOA can represent the entire community and enter into an agreement with the county to do the roads. Otherwise, you've got to have 100%. You know, y'all had set a figure of, I think, 60%, but on private roads, and we've got three of them in here that are private roads, it requires 100%.
None of them were in HOA, are they?
One.
One is?
One is. So I wanted to emphasize that. Number two, per parcel assessment is the preferred method of assessing versus front footage for a couple of reasons. These are the primary reason. There's some others, but one eliminates problems of flag lots that, you know, you've got a parcel behind others that just has a driveway that comes out, makes connection, so they don't have a lot of frontage, but they need to pay their fair share. So by doing a per parcel, that's the net result. They pay their fair share. Two, no calculation required for different amounts of frontage or size of lot. You can have different configurations, but again, we're boiling down to who's using the road and the users need to pay. We do have another issue that we need to discuss at some point, and I spoke to them even today about this, and I think it's the one issue that will ultimately require more conversation, and that's the number of campers that people are living in on parcels. You know, you've got a primary residence on a lot of properties in the county, and then you've got a couple of campers out there that people have turned into full-time residences.
Well, that's against our zone.
We're going to have to address this in our LDRs. We're going to have to take a close look at this because currently, apparently, we're allowing a temporary use. We're calling it temporary, but they're able to stay there for up to five years and then renew that temporary issue. So it goes beyond the issue of someone's house burns down, and we give them a year like we've dealt with. But this can have a pretty significant impact on us for lots of reasons. So we need to take a close look at that. But we have that out there. So you're going to have some of these roads where you've got, for instance, primarily five-acre parcels, and most of them have one residence on them. Then you've got people that have two or three additional, or up to two more residences that are living in something that really isn't a house, a camper or a shed. We've got people living in sheds out here that they bought off the side of the road and went out there and turned them into houses. So we've got lots of things that we need to deal with, but those types of things I just want to mention to you may come up later in public hearings when people are saying, "I don't mind paying my fair share for this road assessment, but how about the guy down here that's got three residences on it?" So I'm just sharing that with you right now. We don't need to get bogged down in the conversation, but it very likely will come up again. Dealing with large parcels, number three on here, and then ultimately I want to get into these projects that we've got delineated in this book. When we're dealing with larger parcels, there are a couple of ways to do that. One is to charge for the number of equivalent units. Example, if an average-size lot has five acres, and that's a lot of what you're finding in the rural area with the residence on it, it's a five-acre parcel, then a 20-acre parcel would be equal to four equivalent units and would thereby be charged four times. Now, that's going to set some people off, I can tell you right now. But one option that that property owner has is to enter into an agreement voluntarily that restricts the numbers, the number of developable units on that larger parcel. They can do that. There are lots of those things in place today. Some have conservation easements that they've overlaid on their properties and reduced the amount of development, but you're going to run into that with these large parcels. We've got some of these projects that have primarily five-acre parcels, and you go down the road, and all of a sudden there's an 80 or 90 or 100-acre parcel. What do you do with that? Well, you've seen it in the past. The guy that owns it that gets tired of farming it, and the kids don't want to farm, he carves it up, and all of a sudden, he's a developer overnight. He throws his tractor away, and all of a sudden, he hangs a developer sign out front and sells that thing off in developable units then, as long as he can meet the LDR requirements. Now, he's created a huge impact to that road improvement out there that everyone else paid for. So that's the mechanism for dealing with it. You're either charging for all those potential development, equivalent units, or he enters into an agreement and says that he'll restrict the number of units that go on there, and that has to be recorded, and it's enforceable.
And that's enforceable for ever?
It is enforceable from now on. That's correct. Next thing, some areas will require formal benefit analysis of all properties potentially benefiting. Now, we have some roads. A good example is one that I want to talk to you about tonight that we didn't have in the MSBU list. It's 161st out there south of 90 West. You've got some near Shenandoah Dairy. You've got people out there that really want that road improved, the ones that are closer to 90. In fact, that's, they understand they can't do a chip seal because of the heavy trucks, so it would be an asphalt project if it gets approved. But in any event, it may be, let's say it's a mile long or close to a mile. It's just under a mile long. Well, they can go in there and pay for those improvements, but all of those property owners beyond that 4,750 feet that's in here benefit as well because you know they're going to come out and turn north on that unpaved road until they get to the closest pavement and then make their way on up to 90. So they need to pay their fair share.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'll call you back. This is Chris Doolin. Ricky, did you have a question for him this morning or today?
A little while.
We'll get back with you. I forgot to turn my phone off. He's probably calling to find out what we're doing about our road funding. Anyway, we're going to have a problem with this argument over, "I paid for the road. Now everyone else is using it." When you look at that area around Shenandoah Dairy, as soon as you come down that 4,750 feet, you've got other roads that turn off to the west, go back in there and turn south. So you've got all these additional residences.
Yeah.
Well, they are clearly going to come out onto that paved road to make their way back to 90. That's just an example. That same scenario exists in other areas. Neighbors Giblin suggested that we hire another company that specializes in performing or conducting that analysis to try to assess what percentage of benefit should be assigned to these other properties. Okay, that hasn't been done yet, but that is something that they're recommending be done.
But let me ask you this. If you, who's, if they're going to have a potential cost in paying for it, do they have a vote in the project?
Well, I have to bring that back to you. That I can't speak to you right now. I think what would happen is you'd have to decide how much benefit is assigned to them, and then Neighbors Giblin would probably have to sit down here and have a conversation with them on how you, what participation they have in the overall petition process.
I guess it has to be a process.
Because I'll tell you, when you look at that map, and again, using this illustration... I think we had 30 property owners, Chad. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
And there's probably another 25 or 30 that...
There's probably 50 more.
Yeah. South of there.
Right.
That could come back to that road.
I don't want to get in a situation where we're asking 10 people to vote on something that 100 people are going to pay for.
Or 10 people to vote on it and pay for it, and another 50.
I get it, but if you know you're paying for it and other people are benefiting from it, you know that going into it when you vote to do it.
Correct.
But these other people, if they're not getting a say in it, they don't, they don't know it until all of a sudden, they're saddled with it. And I don't want to get caught in that.
No, I agree. I agree. So we would have to determine whether or not we're going to utilize this other company. Neighbors Giblin doesn't do it, but there is a company that specializes in that. So I just needed to point that out.
And just so I understand what you're saying, that's something that has to be done, or is that just a suggestion?
Has to be done.
Has to be done.
Has to be done. It is an optional.
Gotcha.
Wait, which part isn't optional? The signing?
That the additional property owner, that an analysis be conducted to determine what percentage should be associated with these additional properties because they would need to pay in something.
And that's what Neighbor Giblin said is not optional? I mean, if...
It is not optional.
It is not optional.
Y'all remember, but when they did the one out there by Camp Weed, the road going down there and went around, the people that were on the farther end down there, they were part of a project that we had there. And there was also a study done for that to get all of those people involved as well. I mean, it's been 15 years ago now, when that was done, but it is required.
If you don't remember, they were brought in, then the entire project with the boat and everything?
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yes.
So can we use a different example just to make sure I understand something? Randy?
Mm-hmm.
Let's just go down to the south end on 65th Road.
Right.
Where that was a partial pavement as well.
Goes down to 280th.
That road catches down to 284th, but it's all farmland, or there's nobody that lives on that next section down. How many people down 284th then would benefit from that road?
I can't answer the question on that right now.
Okay.
That would be a part of the analysis by the company.
That's what I was saying, to hire somebody to do that.
Clearly, people are going to come back on 284th and then turn north on that road and reap benefit, but I couldn't begin to answer the question for you.
One of the 284th on that area, that whole area is graded road anyway. When you get on the other side, it's paved road going to the Three Rivers, but...
Right. Okay. Number five, the attorney recommends that the county not get involved in the lime rock and maintenance MSBUs. There've been some recent issues in the courts that haven't been resolved yet. We only had one of those. In fact, I think I spoke to Commissioner Hale about it. He spoke to the people. It was going to cost them more to do an MSBU for that very small project than they could just hire someone and do it themselves. We had that conversation, and that would be true of any very, very small project. You know, the only reason they come to us is because they want to make sure that all of their neighbors pay their fair share, that they agree to. So if they amongst themselves can agree and collect the money themselves and do that, that's great.
It was a tenth of the cost to have someone else do it. I mean, honestly, it was crazy. And they're moving forward with that.
Yeah, that's good. So we can take that one off the list when we get to it.
Yes.
Number six, that of considering adding 161st Road. Then I want to go through the others with you real quick, and then I want to talk about the calendar that we need to try to follow that Neighbors Giblin put together for us for performing everything that needs to be performed in order to get these things done for the current year, if that's the plan. There's a handout that we gave you on 161st. Again, this is, and there's a drawing that you have. That's 90 West. Go out there, and you can see it goes down to 68th Street. What's being proposed is that portion of 161st Road that lies between US 90 and 68th Street. So if you consider, there's your illustration. You've got all these properties that front on it, and then all these other roads that tie back into it. They would funnel traffic through that paved road if it gets built. If you look at the cover page... Chad, this one isn't correct. It says agreement percentage required 100%.
Where's the map?
This is a public road. There's a correction that if you would make that on your cover page.
Yeah.
You see this page right here, the front page?
Mm-hmm.
Second item down talks about percentage required and approval. Change that to 60% if you would. Second item down, agreement percentage required. That should be 60%, not 100%.
Is this a chip seal project or a...
Asphalt. This is the only asphalt that's been proposed so far. Again, this is because we had already informed them that the chip seal simply wouldn't hold up to wear and tear with the big trucks that come and go out of there. You've got, on that segment, and again, this is one that would require an analysis on additional benefit to other property owners, but just on that segment, you've got 30 owners, 41 parcels, 74 equivalent units, and it's currently lime rock and dirt, 4,750 feet. The, it says base work. That's actually the asphalt project. This is an estimate prepared by North Florida Professional Services, almost $400,000. The units, roughly $5,300 a piece per equivalent unit. Now, how can you have 30 owners and 74 equivalent units? That goes to the size of the parcels that they own. So if you go through here and look at the names and the property owners, you'll realize that some of them have more acreage. On the second page, you'll see what the estimated cost is per person or per owner. You've got some at $5,300 and some at $63,000, one of them down here. This is over 10 years, so that person that has $63,000 might have something to say about this proposed assessment. That's the one...
But in the long run, he still only gets one vote. He don't get a vote for each parcel, correct?
That's correct. That's a parcel.
I know, but I mean, equivalent parcels.
Right. Yeah, he doesn't get a vote for each equivalent unit. And again, that's where I suggested that they have the option of restricting in an agreement with the county the number of future developable units on that property, and they could reduce that. Now, what's going to happen if they reduce theirs by doing that is the price for everyone else goes up because the cost of the project doesn't change.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have, I have a side that said, the notes that says widow, would there be any exemptions, or would they have to pay that, or would there be some type of exempt?
Every property is going to pay. The county places a lien against the property. It's collected with the taxes. If they don't pay, then there's lien against the property. If it sells in the future, then it's collected at closing.
Yeah. It does not transfer with the, with the sale of the property, does it?
Oh, it has to be paid off at closing.
At the closing, yes.
That's correct.
So that's like forcing them to do that now?
That's exactly what it's doing. It forces everyone to pay their share.
And he's also got, the same guy's also got another piece of property that's right beside it. He had another $15,000, that's $63,000, up to about $80,000, just about.
That's the whole purpose of the petition process and the public hearing process and giving everyone an opportunity to speak and explain their sentiments on these things. I can tell you, I've lived through these things. It can be really nice, and it can be really ugly. On the ugly days, we just leave it all to Commissioner Stapleton, and we come back when it's over.
The one thing I was going to say, I was going to commend you on this because I thought the 2020 election cycle would be great to take care of this, and me and Mr. Clive would be sitting back.
[laughing]
Let y'all part through this.
It was my favorite.
So what I get is, out of this, is that 60% could be the people who have the least cost, and then the ones that get stuck with it, who say no because of the high costs to them, are the ones that are stuck with the higher...
They're not stuck. Again, they have the option of reducing the number of equivalent units on their property.
And that's how they do it. It's just...
They can reduce that number.
Then they hinder the future use of their land and development and potential value of their land.
I'm not pushing it. I'm not liking this. The more we dig into it, the more we go.
Well, I'll be honest with you. It works extremely well. It really does. But it works best in subdivisions with smaller parcels. When you start trying to do these things in these very rural areas with large parcels, in fact, there's one on here that's already dropped out, 68th Green Road. Real large parcels through there just isn't going to happen. So that one is going to be out. Commissioner Hale's already spoken to the people that started that initiative, and it's just going to fall out. And that will always be the case, or the majority of the time, it's going to be the case when you've got large parcels. These things just don't work. You need smaller lots, smaller parcels, and you need, you need, if you get into subdivisions, it works best in subdivisions where you've got a lot of improved properties. If you've got a lot of absentee owners that live in New Jersey, New York, and Miami, then they're going to vote no. The people that live out there that breathe the dust every day are going to vote yes if they can afford to pay. But again, it's going to work best where you've got smaller parcels. Now, we've got a couple here that I think might work, but we've got some that I think won't work as well.
Mr. Harris, and you may not know, because I know you're saying that you were instructed to hire a company to do this analysis, but I was just sitting here thinking about it. We're talking about the other people that would travel it to go home every day, and there would be a percentage for them. What about like, I guess never really thought about, but like Shenandoah Dairy being a business? I mean, and how much they would use it and access it with it?
Well, I think everyone would agree. Their wear and tear would be greater than anyone else's on that road because of the equipment coming and going out there, but they would clearly be accessing that road. That would be a part of that analysis.
Would that analysis offset these prices?
If the analysis comes back and says that you need to assign X percentage to these other property owners, even though they don't front on the property, then yes. The list that you have here of people that are paying, it would come down, and there would be a corresponding expense assigned to these other property owners as a result of that analysis.
Business owners.
Pardon me?
Or business owners.
Right.
Well, it's going to be based on their land, right?
Land.
Yeah.
You said these are, estimated costs are broken up over 10 years?
That's correct.
And what is the estimated FF? What's the FF stand for?
It gets complicated.
Yeah, the front, front footage, and we're not, yeah, that, we didn't extend that out because we're not going to do that. And these are, let me just also say right now that there are some additional expenses that haven't been calculated in yet. You've got the finance expenses. You've got Neighbors Giblin. That is not a huge expense, but it's one that needs to be assigned. If you decide that you want anything to be, any expense to be recouped for administration and the work that we do to put all this together. All this was produced by Chad and me just working together. I tell him how to put this together, and I had him dealing with Neighbors Giblin and some others, so it's a considerable amount of time putting this information together on these projects, which is fine, but you just need to be aware that there's a finance expense that's still going to come. You've got PFM. You know, we did the RFP process before, and PFM was selected, Public Financial Management, to handle this for us and obtain the low-interest loans, so there'd be an expense there. But this is pretty close. This is going to be the greatest expense right here, aside from the small amount for Neighbors Giblin and the PFM and the finance charges. So the question is, do you want, first question, do you want to include 161st or, Commissioner Hale, did they get the petition process yet and circulate it out there?
I believe it has started.
And the only reason I brought it up now is because when you get to the calendar, you'll have better appreciation for this question. It's getting late in the year to try to get this done in order to try to include it in next year's collection of taxes to start paying for these things if we can get the projects done in time. So that's a question that we need to answer. Do we want to include 161st? And then next, and we're going to run out of time here, but next, you've got all these others. If you turn to your table of contents in the book that we put together for you, 100, the first one, 155th Lane and 155th Loop, I think that's a good project. I think that one is probably as doable as anything that we have in this packet right now. It's kind of laid out like a subdivision. It's a road that turns in, goes in there, makes loop, comes back out, basically developed out.
No one can benefit from it.
The only people going to benefit from it is the people that live in there.
Right. It's south of 104th. If you look at your map, it's, it's actually a on here. But you can see out there, we highlighted that for you. Just goes in, makes a loop, and comes back out. I think that project is very doable if there's sufficient support out there when the petitions go out. And you can see that there aren't a lot of other properties that come back in and tie into any of those roads.
Are there going to be any, I noticed this is, is this over a pipeline, or is this over a...
It's over a pipeline, the one they just put through.
Yep. Is this, are we going to end up having maintenance contract being affected by the pipeline company that they're doing maintenance? They have to go out there and dig up the road? Do we have a contract in place that...
We have a permit requirement in place for utilization of any of our right-of-way or going under our roads, and if they disturb anything, they have to repair it.
Well, the reason why I ask that question is because they went under 99th Lane down in McAlpin. They replaced it, from what I can see, they replaced it with that old sand seal stuff. They replaced it with this lime rock. I don't think they ever put any asphalt back on top of it.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to go take a look at it. But in any event, we've got a permit requirement for anyone that's running pipes, water lines, or anything under the roads or through the right-ways. Except in McAlpin, we let them do whatever they want to. That was a joke, for the record. So like I said, I think that this first one is a good project. The next one, 65th Road, I think that's probably, has the potential to be a good project. That's the one, 65th Road, turns south off of 27 and goes down to 284th.
Yeah, that's where it goes down.
Now, the gentleman that started the petition process on this really didn't have an interest in going that far. I think he lives about two houses in off of 27. He was just sick and tired of eating dust, and he said, "Can we do an assessment?" He was ready for us to build a driveway off 27 to his house and stop. But I'm not, I'm of the opinion that we need to go, if we're going to do these chip seal roads or asphalt roads, we need to go to the next intersecting roadway. And that's how it got down to 284th.
On that particular road, the reason why I didn't go all the way down, because between 280th and 284th, there's just, I think, one person that owns both sides of the road. It's all farm. If I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but it didn't seem like there was...
Actually, that one stops at 280th. I was looking at the map. It actually does stop at 280th. That was the closest intersecting roadway. That was the closest intersecting roadway, south of 27. That has the potential to be a good project. I'm not sure if there will be adequate support when the petitions go out to accomplish that.
You say this is over 10 years?
10 years.
Considering the amount of money that it costs for the chip seal versus the base work, what is this, that base work?
Yeah, let me mention something to you, Commissioners. The base work number was actually put together by North Florida Professional Services and the numbers that they used for building the base for these chip seal projects were actually numbers from bid contracts. We use real numbers from contracts that were bid and that's where the base work numbers came from. We added the surface treatment because we had those bid separately, the chip seal. So these numbers should be fairly close. They would still have to be bid out as a project later, but that's where the estimate So Commissioners, let me back up a second. Do you have an interest in proceeding with the first one, 155th Lane and 155th Loop? Right now, we're in the process of moving ahead and I'll show you more about that with the calendar in a moment. I just need a consensus so that I can concentrate on the ones that we think are actually, have a chance of surviving this process. And I think, I think the first one does.
I'm good with it because it doesn't affect anybody else's and we don't have that question as far as other, other property is being affected.
I know they've been pushing it hard. I don't know that those numbers are going to work for them, but we can move forward with it. There is one question I have. Everybody on that road's at the same price, 15,000, 15,000, 15,000, except for one property on it, he's at 144,000 or 141,000.
That's where it's going to get tricky.
That's where you're going. When it hits somebody like that, I mean, that's mortgage for a house over 10 years.
Well, here's, I'll go back again to what I said before, it's because he has 47.6 acres and...
I get it.
And he'll have the option of opting out on some of those equivalent units. When that happens, the price goes up for everyone else.
Everyone else. There's also a, I don't know if they're tax exempt or not, there's a shelter on that road.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, those are issues that'll be cleaned up through the whole process. Neighbors Giblin will really refine some of this information. It ain't going to be far off, but they'll do a lot of refining on this before it gets to the final process. So what's your pleasure on that one?
As long as it's got your cell phone number and your home phone number on the paper.
Well, I've got it set up to forward, on this one, I've got it set up to forward to Commissioner Hale, I believe.
No, that's Gamble.
Yeah, that is Gamble.
Yeah.
You had it right the first time.
Yeah, there you go.
I got enough of those that called me already.
Well, I'm assuming that person's probably going to opt out, so you're looking at adding about $6,000 per unit on it, it'd be about 20, $22,000 over 10 years. That's two grand a year or more per person. I, I don't have a problem with letting it be in the people's hands to decide it, but I mean, I think we need to put the information there and...
Now, they will receive a petition and it'll show the estimated expense to each one of them. They're not going to be in the dark on this. I mean, that's part of the process.
Right, but it shows the estimated expense now at 15,000. That's a pretty big jump because I, the guy that's at $141,000 is going to say, ah.
We're just going to have to have a conversation with him. I mean, the ones that are unique like that, we'll pick up the phone, call them, and I'll say, Commissioner Gamble sent me out here to talk to you and...
I'll go talk to him.
Just tell him. But that's, that's the best way to handle those larger parcels.
So I don't know what they trying to do to you.
When you have these larger parcels, you, we're just going to have to reach out to these people and say, here's the process, here's what's going on. See, they may not, that property owner may not even be aware of what's going on here, but I think it's prudent to go talk to them and say, you've got a large parcel, this is a potential impact.
But he could potentially still be forced into it if the other 60%...
Yeah, I just feel like, I feel like in these situations, you're almost putting a damage on them, you're giving them an option to pay 144,000 or lose the use of your property. I mean, these, I guess because of the, the situation we're in with large parcels, small parcels and not being a subdivided area, it's unique, but that seems pretty harsh on somebody to say, you've got 47 acres and, you know, now until the time Lord comes back, you can't do nothing with it but have 47 acres.
Well, they can, they could pick, they could say, hey, I'll pay for every one of those equivalent units, or I'll put a cap of three on there, so they pay for three. I mean, they've got options, or they can just vote no, period.
Well, it's got three different parcels.
If you get 60%.
That's what I'm...
You've set the threshold pretty high. This is higher than probably most of them in the state, 60%.
Could be 47 acres that don't look for Ricky Gamble.
Is there any way we can consider having a cap on the number of years that you can't do anything with it?
If I'm correct, I think most of his land is closer to...
In the future?
No, it's, because the road's going to be there.
Yeah.
The big, the big track is more close to the road. See, he's asphalt right here. I mean, he's not back here in the back corners where I'm saying. He's way up close to the front. He's going to charge me 100 and, 100 and something thousand and I can access my property from asphalt and I won't have an issue with it.
I think the one from the side.
Or close to asphalt, I'm sure.
I think it's the one on the side that's the big property.
Well, I think it's family. I think it's family.
According to yellow lines, that's all one, that's all one big piece of property, with the house coming off of the left side going down 155th Lane.
Is it this one?
This one right here. And the other question I've got is, is when a person sells their property and they are going to include, let's just say they, they paid it all off and the market value of that property is going to be markedly higher while they're owing a balance. Some of these people said, look, I can't afford this, I'm just going to sell it and now they have $22,000, let's just say their price is $22,000 for the estimate, that they're going to have to add back into it. Is that going to affect the taxable value of that property for the next person? Because that's going to jack up add-on rates for people buying property. Because we were told specifically by a property appraiser that when the property is sold, he uses that as the, as a, in the calculation for, for the rates, the tax rates.
Actual sales, actual sales are evaluated to assign the values to the balance of the properties.
So does MSBU get included in the actual sale? That's the question.
If it sells for that price, enough sufficient amount to cover the cost of the improvement, yes. But then the other question is, is it comparable to another subdivision that started with paved roads?
Well, I don't get the, I don't have a problem with it. What the value of it is, but what I see is, I'm just using the scenario of somebody saying, okay, look, I own five acres out here, it's going to cost me another eight, $10,000. I can't afford that, that extra $1,000 a year in MSBU taxes, so I'm just going to put my property up for sale, add the $10,000 into it and it'll be good. Well, we paid, if he sells that property and has that $10,000 added in, that pays for his part of that MSBU.
Right.
But then the tax rates for the next property owner goes up. So we, we are incrementally, actually, we're doing it a lot more than incrementally, we are sufficiently growing this tax base on the backs of our residents because of a road that got put in...
That they asked for.
That 60% of them asked for.
Yeah, that's correct. Petition process that you put in place requires 60%.
All right, there's a consensus to move on without one. Correct.
Yeah.
Can we go on to the next one because we got two minutes, right now a minute before the board meeting.
Okay, so you've got 65th Road. Let me make it easy for you. Your tab F is a lime rock project, that needs to come off.
Okay.
And C.
So that one's out. Pardon me?
And C as well.
Yeah, and C is out. That one's being withdrawn. That one would be a no. The other one would be a no. F would be a no. 161st is a yes to proceed and see if we get the petitions. Is that correct? Because we haven't received those yet, so that's a yes. How about the one east of Branford, 65th Road? Are we okay with that one?
I am.
Everybody's okay with that one? So you have two more. You've got 112th Place. That's out there off of the Sod Farm Road, running parallel with the railroad and...
90 East.
Toward Welborn. Correct, 90 East.
Is there a reason why that one would or wouldn't qualify?
If you look at the estimated cost page, you've got one of them in there that's $127,000.
Yeah, about like that other one. I did lose them all, all of that section.
Yeah. So, I mean, again, you're going to have these from time to time and again, you've, you know, the property owner has to decide what his sentiments are on these and communicate them back to the board.
Okay.
But the rest of them are, you know, not far off, fairly uniform. So what are your thoughts on that one?
I'm fine with...
Okay to proceed?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And the last one was a combination of four that are all kind of tied together. That's...
It's really one road. It's just the way it winds and turns.
That's right.
That, our non-one-one system, every time it makes a 90, it gets a new name.
Right.
But it's really a dead end road.
Like a little subdivision?
The what?
Like a...
Yeah, it just, all it does, all it does is just snake back in there, makes a couple 90s and every time it makes a 90, it gets a new name.
I have a problem with it. I think they're going to choke over their price, but...
But I believe, now, does it matter? That is a private road, I do believe, isn't it?
Uh, let me go look at that one. 112th was a private road, right?
It appeared to be to me.
Oh, that's the one with the HOA?
Yeah, HOA. We'd have to send them the information. Again, the petition still has to go out on all of these things, but...
Right. I was making sure I was thinking of the right one. I'm pretty sure it was a private road.
Yeah.
I'm fine with moving forward with that one.
Okay. All right. Now, if you'll take a brief look at your, at the calendar that's on the second page of what we started with here, you'll see what needs to be accomplished near term over the next few months. Neighbors Giblin will come, they'll prepare some information that'll have to come before the board. There'll be a public hearing. There'll be some things that need to be adopted by the board. You'll eventually get down, and May 8th, county mails out property owner ballots. Those will be out for about a month. County tabulates ballot results, then we'll come back and we'll have a better picture of what people think about this. And it'll take you all the way through the process to the time that it has to be, everything has to be adopted for the assessment roll. Do you have any questions about that?
I don't have any.
Okay, we're good?
Anyone else have any questions on that?
None.
Is that all right to close the workshop and go right into the board meeting? At this time, we will close our workshop and we'll go right into our six o'clock regular scheduled board meeting.